With liberty and justice for all.
All these years I still want to see flag. Thank you, Mrs. Wing. All right, please turn your cell phones to silence. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
There are not, Madam Chair.
No, there aren't any motions to accept the agenda.
No motion. A second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes. Visitor comments?
Just name it out again.
Awesome, welcome.
Thanks.
All right, considering the consent agenda, considering minutes of the previous monthly board meeting, the monthly cash flow, including investments, monthly bills paid, monthly bills paid in the activities accounts. Uh, we have donations, which I was on that page.
Booster Club for ninety-eight, thirty-eight, twenty-five.
How do I? I punched too many times. All right. Booster Club, ninety-eight, thirty-eight, twenty-five. Like, thank the Pilgrim Fire Department for five hundred dollars, I believe that was for swimming lessons. Dorcas for four thousand dollars for school supplies for students in need. I believe that. And then on here, it also says, uh, Brainerd Legion, the athletic sign, and it gets permitted for Costco to be used for health supplies, so thank you to all of them. And then also the personnel summary sheet, which is enclosed.
Madam Chair, the one from the Pelican line is close.
Oh, on the bottom of the Dorcas one, I didn't see that farther down. Thank you for pointing that out. Now I'm looking at all these good. Yes, one ninety-five. Perfect. Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion. One second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes. Special Board reports with possible action, and if we're gonna start with activities this evening.
We did meet Madam Chair, we met on our eighteenth. Uh, we called the meeting to order, and then we started talking about the weight room expansion project, um, the lease levy option for funding, and went over that. Um, then Mr. Mullen went into the winter sports update. Uh, we went over the coaching evaluation, the participation numbers, the survey results, and then what changes might be needed for next year, um, to kind of give an overview on it. Most of that stuff is in the packet today. Then we discussed the spring activities update, um, all the programs that are out there. Um, the coaching openings, which were done as of right now, so hopefully we're all kind of on that one. And then we just had an open discussion about what is needed, what is not needed for the spring activities. Um, and then we went into the other activities within the musicals. Um, that is, uh, Little Shop of Horrors, and that will start April third through the sixth. And we talked about the Pro Start, um...
He's reading from the minute.
That's right, sorry. My bad, yep.
I just see your eyes go.
Sorry, I own that one. But, it's a good update. Um, and then we, uh, Pro Start was, uh, fourth in hospitality management. Then we talked about the one X in robotics, I think robotics was fixed in the section, um, on that side of it, and then we adjourned part of the activities, and went on to the community education, um, with Mr. Smith. We went through all the classes that is offered, and that is also in your packet. Um, and then we did, he had an update on the advisory meeting that he had with his advisors. Um, then we went through the youth sports updates, um, all the winter programs and the numbers that were within the winter programs, which were growing steadily. Um, and then he was the spring slash summer programs, which is growing steadily also with all the kids. Um, it was coaches needed within those spring and summer programs. Um, as of right now, Mr. Smith has all of them, I think, all lined up, so we shouldn't have an issue there. Um, and then we talked about the programs within the spring and summer, um, all the baseball, softball needs and everything that needed to be done on that side of it. And that was it, and then we adjourned. Pretty easy. Not a meeting, but easy.
So I have one question that was included in the packet.
Yep.
Wrestling startup on Dean or Ross?
Yes.
Is that something I don't wanna do?
Yeah, maybe we'll just just talk about it, yep.
Just not go there, okay.
Some of those things would be already in the budget. Some of them would not probably be in the budget. Some of them might be fundraised for, but a lot, a lot of those things would already be budgeted for, like the uniforms, the... But Matt presented that as cost for starting it on our own for next year.
Okay.
So some of those things...
That is just more informational.
Yeah.
Okay.
Some of those things are already budgeted.
Good.
Um, some of them are not, such as the wrestling mat, an additional wrestling mat for fifteen thousand, that is not in the budget. Um, but those other things, like the uniforms and the, the scale and the equipment, those things are all, are all in the budget for next year.
It was, it was nice to see it break down in size.
Yep. So the only thing that really isn't, could be the, the additional mat.
Okay.
Is the wrestling scale different from the weight room?
Yes, it's certified, it's a big, it's a...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or it's not...
It'd be a certain one. You, you want it to be a little lower?
No, I've never stepped on that one.
It's, it's a...
It's very beat up.
Yeah, it's electronically digital.
Yeah.
It's a...
No, I, it's a... But, anyway.
So that was it for the committee?
There's that.
That was it.
Mike, any other questions for the Activities Committee? All right. Moving on to Facilities.
I do have a meeting scheduled with the Lakewood representatives, uh, I believe, uh, a few weeks, three or four weeks around.
Yep.
About the wrestling project, so get more information from them.
Personnel, we did not meet, but, uh, we did hire a new high school principal for the coming year. So I would make a motion to approve the contract for David Reed's.
A second.
Any questions or comments or concerns for him?
I'll just say, he will be here at the May Board meeting to be introduced and meet you. Um, good, good proceed, uh, thought it was a very good process. We had a couple of different committees. Uh, we interviewed, uh, all of the candidates, I think it ended up being five candidates, I don't know if I'm mistaken, or four, can't remember. One backed off the weekend of before. Uh, he was our number one candidate from both committees.
The one that backed off?
No.
Oh, the way you said, like...
The way I said, one of the candidates backed off. So, um, he is an assistant principal currently at Monticello, and, uh, so he'll be here at the May Board meeting to be introduced and meet you real quick.
Okay.
He's coming up that day to spend with Mr. Savage and, um, hang out for the day.
I was told this weekend that we've gotten very lucky, so...
Comes very highly regarded, so...
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes. Unless Mike has anything else, Ryan, I think that's all for Personnel.
We will need to meet sometime, probably in the next month, Personnel, to rat by contract and stuff, once we get that done.
I am no longer traveling, so I'm free whenever.
So Personnel will probably need to meet at some point in the next month or so.
Curriculum.
Yep. This is gonna be the Ryan show today, because he made up for hanging at the beach last month.
No, what you said was, Sarah, you could bring up that.
I didn't say that, yeah.
There's nothing pressing, we'd rather we...
We'll just wait. Um, so the report that I have, what I wrote up here is, um, from the Curriculum Committee meeting, um, of the national, and...
It's been a while.
It has been a little bit, yeah. Um, so I'm gonna go through a couple of pieces with that, and then Wendy is here and is gonna talk a little bit about UFLI, and we've talked about UFLI all year, but you get a chance to see some of it. And so we have a video that we put together as a resource for families, so... Um, so for the report, uh, one of the things that we went through were curricular updates. So a couple of things just to have on your radar. Early childhood, um, we will, uh, be purchasing a, it's called a Scholastic, it's the pre-k programming, uh, a piece that provides an updated resource for them. We're also talking about some of that connection with, um, how we use UFLI and how we do some of those literacy pieces to see how that can come down as well into preschool programming. Um, elementary has been working on UFLI this year, that has been our main implementation. That is, in terms of literacy, is one half of the reading rope, that they talk. So that's the foundational side. The piece that we're working on this year is the comprehension side, so we're the resources for comprehension. So we have been reviewing different, um, curriculums. The state of Minnesota has also done rubrics around each of those curriculums, and so looking at that and then looking at what fits us best. And so that's gonna be the big decision that we have to make going, uh, into the spring, and then it'll be the implementation cycle of how are we going to implement that, um, so that we are providing enough training and enough, uh, support as that is being implemented in classroom.
And make sure the teachers all follow it, not just skip back to what they were doing.
Which is part of how we have implemented UFLI.
Have done.
Yep. So that, and then we'll talk more about UFLI in a little bit. Um, and then middle school, high school, the focus is shifting into mathematics. And so with, um, elementary heavily focused in literacy, we're looking at the curriculum and the resource that we have in middle school. And so looking at a number of different curriculums, we could pilot some of those going into next year. One of the, the changes within Minnesota State Sanders is that it's focusing or moving a large portion to data and statistics. And so that is a big chunk of the Minnesota State Sanders, about a fourth of it, where before it was kind of an add-on. And so that's gonna change, uh, some of when we teach what we teach, and so we'll be looking at that as well with the resources that we have. Um, number two is part of the handout I have, so the second page, and this is a proposal, um, to look at how we accelerate mathematics. So what we currently have is a pseudo honors program where we run about four sections per grade level. One of those sections is an honors program, uh, or moves a little bit faster. One of the, the problems with this is we do not have enough students that would make an entire section of that honors program. And so to balance class sizes, you end up moving some more students in there as well. What that does in the long run is we accelerated these classes, and then when we get to algebra two and we get to some of those higher level mathematics, we have students that have gone through there at such a fast pace that they're not ready, they're not ready to comprehend that, they're not ready to work through that. And so the proposal I have here is to do an accelerated model where, beginning in fifth grade, we would look at the data from fourth grade and identify those students that would be the ninetieth percentile. Uh, on local assessments, it would include looking at the MCAT tests as well, and then offering that out to families to make a jump, make an acceleration. So that jump would be, in fifth grade, you would actually take the sixth grade math class, right? And that would be the jump. So acceleration will still be here, it still exists, but to have class sizes that are more homogeneous, that are more leveled out, uh, so that you are keeping that pace at grade level expectations. So fifth grade classes would be at fifth grade expectations, and then if as soon as accelerated, they would actually jump a grade level and take sixth grade math class. We can do that in our schedule. Uh, we have a sixth grade section that runs at the same time as fifth grade sections, so we can do that easily with the schedule without changing, you know, the rest of the schedule for a kid, right? Um, one of the, there's a number of districts that have done this. One of them that, that I was in previously was Peers. Peers did this because they were having the same issue, that students were being accelerated, that then down the line were not ready to move forward. And so they have moved to this model where they look at that data, they look at student scores, and then they offer that acceleration to students that, that have the scores, the aptitude, but also that conversation with families and parents and teachers of the workload as well, and moving forward, they think you keep up with that.
How many years has Peers been doing it?
Peers now, this would be their fifth year.
Okay, and it's obviously working very well.
Working very well, and yes, their scores are above us in the region, so... The conversation that we're having at the high school is very much how do we bridge this with a lot of kids, and so trying to move away that we don't have to do that. And we have students that are getting algebra two that are ready to take algebra two. That is a, a proposal. Um, the next, uh, spot is, I'm gonna bring this to the district leadership team and dissect it and go through it with that group as well. Uh, number three is PSEO and CIS, this has been an ongoing conversation all year. Um, looking at just the increased number of students taking PSEO or the number of PSEO credits that we have, and looking at what options do we have and what is the better programming for students. And so we offer college and the schools courses, but we offer them based off of the teachers that we have that can teach those courses. Um, and PSEO is a much larger catalog, and so students look at that, they look at it to get those high school credits to be college credits as well, but they're also looking for flexibility. A lot of those PSEO courses, I would say, by far the majority of our kids are taking it as online, and so they're looking for that flexibility. We have been exploring how to increase the number of CIS courses that we have. So we're looking at a consortium model where we would share teachers. So we have, we have a pilot right now with, uh, Pequa. So Pequa is teaching a CIS course that we have some students taking. We're gonna do the same next fall, where we, where our business teacher, Mr. Silver, is gonna be teaching classes that those Pequa students can take as well, 'cause they don't have that in their list of CIS courses. We're looking for some of them to expand ours. So that's one thing that we're looking at in terms of how to keep kids here. They also, the cost for CIS is considerably less than six, eight dollars for a CLC. Um, the other thing that we're looking at is our arrangement with CLC. And so we've been exploring other colleges as well. So one of them that we're looking at right now is Alex Tech. And part of that is they have some additional offerings, and they have some different programming. So they offer a, um, high school online program that is CIS courses or PSEO credit, they're college credit. But they have brought the cost down, creased significantly, about a hundred and fifty dollars a credit versus about two hundred and sixty dollars. And they have some pluses to that as well. The courses that they take, there are only high school students that are in those courses as well. Um, the communication model is a little bit more frequent, a little bit more embedded with the high school. And so Alex Tech has one of those programs, there's another one called M State. And so looking at some of those, and, and really every district in the area is looking at that right now. And part of it is CLC has not developed those programs, it hasn't developed that, that side of the programming. And so how do we balance this piece out, both financially, but also when we look at what's the best mode of education for kids, so...
Well, just, just helping the cost savings, you know, and, and, even if we decided to melt the back, what's the deal is to...
Correct.
Check it out.
And it's the same sets of courses, you know? Um, one college versus another might name it somewhat different, but it's still a biology, general educational credit. It's still a history credit. Um, and it still works towards, whether that student's working towards an A degree or they're working towards a four-year degree or a certificate program, it's still, it's still those things. The pieces that we're looking at is how do we make sure that, uh, we won't, if we move from CLC, it won't be a cold turkey, completely cut off. We have students that are finishing programming over at CLC. There is programming that's in person, so we have their, uh, diesel, uh, yeah, I think it's their welding and diesel mechanic program, their certificate program. And so making sure that nobody's, nobody's gonna miss any of that, that they, uh, that we do some switching.
Weren't we looking at something with Southwestern, or you were looking at...
We looked at Southwestern, we looked at Kirkston as well, uh, as well as Superior, which we were connected with before.
Yep.
Um, and so looking at who has those options, who has those pieces. One of the, there's the PSEO side of it, and it's the cost of PSEO. There's also the instructor certification. And some colleges, if they're a four-year program in the state, um, have a little bit more openness to some of that certification for, for teachers that are working towards their, um, what is their master's degree plus eighteen credits in that area, um, where the two-year colleges have kind of come to an end and said, nope, if you don't have it, you're not teaching anymore. And so that's part of also looking, how do we expand our CIS program? If we do, we're gonna need some of that flexibility, so...
Can I touch base on that real quick?
Yeah.
I was part of a, a group that negotiated of the twelve area schools with CLC, uh, last Thursday. There were four of us that kind of represented the twelve schools. Yeah, it was a good conversation with several, uh, President Herr, Herr and a couple of other people, and, um, the, the, the comments that we, all four of us made on the committee were, you know, we understand that, you know, CLC is our community, they're, they have staff and, uh, teachers and people that go to all of our schools in the area. Um, and I also pointed out, when I first came here, we used to be with Lake Superior, and we switched over to CLC because they were our neighbor. You know, it was better for kids, it was more online, or I'm sure it was more in-person. COVID changed that, COVID changed it to where it was all online, and most of it, anyway. And, um, the cost, and, and number of kids that are going, not just in our school, but all of our area schools, has just really hit our budgets, uh, really, really immensely. Um, interesting comment that was, what, that, uh, was heard was that CLC's budget for PSEO is, and C I, CIS is four million dollars, which is a third of their budget. So a third of their budget is PSEO kids, high school kids. Now, I made the comment, you know, we, we understand that, you know, we wanna work with CLC, and they're our neighbor and they're our partner in, in our community, but when the cost is a hundred and thirty-five dollars versus...
Two hundred and sixty.
Two hundred and sixty. It's, you know, plus...
And the communication, the kids withdrawing and coming back, not graduating.
Right, so they're, they're going to do some work, and I, and President Herr asked us, are we, are you guys all gonna cut us cold turkey? And my comment was, I don't see us cutting it cold turkey, because we have, it'll be a hodgepodge. You know, it'll be, some kids will still need to continue there. Um, some classes might be better offered there, 'cause Alex Tech doesn't have it, for example. Um, but the majority of us, I think, would see us either going to M State or Alex Tech, depending on what's best for each school in the area.
Well, and it's not cold turkey if you just had a meeting with them and told them you were looking at other options.
Yeah.
They've been...
Right, yeah, so...
You need to fix that.
But they're, they're, but, you know, we're on our budget ties right, right now, you know, so... But it was a good meeting, um, I mean, it was well-respected, I mean, it was good, good communication. They're gonna do some work and see if they can, they can pattern some of those things after Alex Tech and, and M State, but I don't see the dollar amount coming down much.
Yeah.
It may come down a little bit, but it's not gonna come down, um, but, so anyway, it was good, it was a good meeting, so...
So more to come as, as we look through that, but our teachers are working towards, uh, supplying the information to Alex Tech. Uh, we're doing more of that this next week, just to make sure that we have everything in mind if we switch over to that for our CIS courses. Um, and then looking at what does that look like for those courses, if students take it through their online version of it. The next one, um, on there is Fast Track update, and so kind of throughout the year, I said I'd provide a update on where we are with Fast Track, so this is our first year with Fast Track. Um, so the next two pages, the first one is literacy and the second page is mathematics. This was the sheet I started off with the fall as well, and just to keep people in mind, the column to the right or left, I think, column to the left, um, that is the district goal. So that is the goal we set as a district. As you move to the right, the benchmarks are breaking that down by each grade level. So when we met with teachers in the fall, we looked at each grade level and said, is this a good goal? All of that rolls up into the goal for the district, right? So, uh, looking at that, and then you can see the three columns, there was fall, winter, and then you'll see the blank spot is for spring.
And when it's spring testing in the...
Spring testing will be in Maine.
Okay.
Yeah, the first couple of weeks of Maine, so... The color coding, which the key is on the backside of each of those pages, but the color coding is green. We've met the benchmark, so the benchmark we sat at, at each grade level, we've met that already in the winter. Obviously, our hope is that we continue that into the spring, 'cause it's still another testing round, okay? Yellow is, we're moving towards that, we're moving still in a positive direction towards that goal. And red is, we're either flat or we're actually moving in a wrong direction, right? So a couple of highlights for the first page, the literacy one, you can see the majority, we have either met the goal or at least moving towards it. The one grade level in particular that was not, that was flat, is first grade. Uh, we talked a little bit more about that in the, in the Curriculum Committee. First grade has been, uh, kind of a notorious, like Achilles' heel for us, uh, why can't we move kids past a certain point? Um, we actually pulled together all of first grade and, and looked and said, this is the data that we have. What can we do right now? What can we do at, at this point in the year and change? And so we are in the midst of changing some of those activities and things that they're doing in the classroom. Um, one of the things that we talked about is we don't want this to be, oh, we got to the end of the year, next year we'll do it different. Um, what can we do right now to make some change? So that's the mentality that we've taken, and hopefully we will see some turnaround with that. We took the data from their winter testing and we broke it apart. We looked at each component, and we identified the area that was the biggest need off of that, and then we talked about those independent activities and practice activities that focus on that particularly. In this case, it would, it's, uh, fluency in particular, so that practice with reading, not that they, the kids know their sounds, the kids know how to blend those, those pieces together, but the fluency of reading it is the score that was the lowest. So digging in. Quite a few, but first grade.
I got the first graders. That's what I'm guessing.
The second page is mathematics, and you can see within math, um, we have, again, the bulk in green, yellow moving towards that, so moving towards that. Remember with the benchmark goals that we talked about with teachers is it's not just the fall score, it's keeping those kids at proficient and adding more to it. So it's...
It's like you're having issues with tenth grade.
Tenth grade, yes, so look at the backside for all of them, yes. So one of the things that's different for us this year was, we never did star testing past eighth grade. And so one of the things that, that we were having conversations both with teachers, but also just amongst kind of planning pieces, is that many of our kids, especially our tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders, haven't taken any test passes in eighth grade before. And so changing that mentality of, you need to take this serious, we need to take that time to put in it. Eleventh grade in particular is one, um, looking at, we have kids that come for mathematics, they come for that one piece. And so the seriousness of taking that, 'cause then the PSEO conversation comes into play, they leave for PSEO and they go to other things. So that it's not just, I'm gonna sit here and I'm gonna click, 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 and it just becomes that, right? And that's the data that we're seeing, it's not just even statistically possible score, like, it's just plummet. And so looking at and saying, are we actually taking the time to do it? And that takes me five to six minutes to do that, so...
That brings me back to one of the PSEO questions. Are any of the schools considering putting the actuator back in, so kids actually have to be ready and prepared for the first class before we roll them in there?
That's part of the Alex Tech and M State piece.
They require it.
They don't require it, but you can work with them to do that, and that's, there, there's a much better way of getting kids that are actually ready for it.
Yeah.
So that was one of the pieces that...
Do that. That ended in COVID.
They did, they removed that requirement away.
Yeah, it never came back after COVID, so that's why I...
Yeah, so it is part of M States and Alex Tech. It's not required, but schools can, they'll work with you on that, I think, I'm not sure, Jason would have more info on that, but I know it was broad.
And when we met with Alex Tech, they talked more about, again, working with each high school, um, how... How do we get kids to where we can say they're ready to take that course? As opposed to, with the restrictions, that has been one of our biggest concerns. Is that it's open and you can take whatever class you want. And, and when we look at that and we say, you're taking a college-level class and failing is obviously the worst one in terms of we're paying for the credit, you're not getting any college credit, and then we're at jeopardy of not graduating. But also the conversation of, should we be saying that you're a high school student who's getting Ds on that college-level course, you should be here taking a high school course?
Well, so yeah, some of them are getting Ds in the classes and then they're going, oh, I'm going to college to, for more freedom.
Right.
Because I don't want to volunteer. Is it, or is it because you're not?
Yeah. There's a couple of pieces that just FYI, Kurt Stumpf and Aaron Nelson testified legislation a couple of weeks ago regarding P S E O. P S E O was never intended to be a credit replacement. It was intended for school, for kids, or mostly programs or classes that small schools or schools didn't offer or didn't have. For example, chemistry, let's say, advanced chemistry. It's turned into a place for colleges to replace their budget, is really what it's been. George Pierce mentioned that of the, you know, I can't remember how many credits he had giving out, but he did a study of his kids. And most of them, how many of them weren't even going to college? But they were taking these college credits because A, it was sometimes easier. B, it was flexible, they didn't, they could do it online and not have to be at school. So you're paying for these credits to go to P S E O and the kid never maybe even attends to go to college. So Kurt and Aaron did a really nice job testifying at the legislator. And I think a lot of legislators on the committee were shocked and stunned. I think there'll be some legislation, maybe not this year, but possibly in the future, that maybe, and of course, colleges are gonna lobby us again, lobby against that because they had the tax.
We're a third of their budget.
Correct.
And one of the, one of the comments I, that I shared with Kurt to present was, you're paying taxpayer money for a kid to get college credit, they fail, and may not even graduate from high school. And that's taxpayer dollars for that kid to go get college credit. And then they may not even graduate from high school. That's not, that wasn't the intent or the purpose of the program, right?
And then what's the repercussions? Because we can't recoup that cost, right?
Then they, then it's up to us to try to get the kid to graduate. Make up credits and stuff, you know, where the college basically says.
Send back their senior year degrees.
So.
That didn't work out very well.
So it's kind of been spearheaded by our region. You know, it's been really good, our superintendents and our principals have really done a nice job of lobbying against some of those things.
Yeah, what are you saying? For our, for our budget, for the kids? Because, I mean, how many kids are just withdrawing because they don't want to have, and then we're paying for that?
Yes. And we just passed the withdrawal deadline.
Yes.
And then the cost has already been paid.
Yeah, for it.
Was interesting, this group of superintendents and high school principals and directors of teaching, the great conversation and talking to the legislature, the consortium piece. I mean, if any of you think back to the days of the C C T V and like shared piece between districts, it's really that idea kind of coming back. Of how do we share the resource, but also to provide, you know, other programming for kids, but they're not leaving us, they're not going.
As a school, do you have to advertise P S E O? When is that, when did that become like a, I mean, is that old?
That was originally the P S E O statute.
I don't know if the statute started in the nineties, but P S E O definitely started.
And you have to, you have to advertise it? Can you change your policy to it?
Can we change the policy? Can we implement a policy that about the passing of the grade?
No, we can't put that restriction on. They have the option to take that. The other is, you know, we have a contract with C L C, we would open a contract with Alex Tech, for example. Students can still go to C L C through just registering, through essentially the MAR system kind of thing. So we don't necessarily have to have a contract with everybody either.
And I would say the majority of kids don't care where they're going. They just want the flexibility and the class, you know?
Yeah, because kids that are gonna go in person, that actually are gonna try and go, because we're not gonna drug Alex.
No, no.
They'll go attend their classes at C L C. The online and the others.
And that would be the hands-on programming. One of the neat things about Alex Tech, which geographically, if we were closer to it, they have actually created programming too, with the hands-on programs, where it's at no cost to the district. So you can, if you have a student who's interested in that program, they, if it's a C T U program, they can join and there's no cost. So.
The downside is a kid would have to.
They'd have to drive an hour.
Drive there every day and/or maybe live with somebody there or, but it's kind of a cool thing. If there's a kid who wanted to go into that field.
And it shows that they're looking for ways to, to help districts out and work together. All right. The, the last one I have on there is tying a little bit about U Fly. And so our foundational literacy programming at the elementary. And Wendy is gonna talk a little bit about U Fly. But the big shift as we've gone to, you know, kind of back and forth, you guys have kind of lived it and seen it. And we, we had a balanced kind of literacy focus, that was level literacy. And phonics kind of went out the door, right? Phonics stopped and I won't say it stopped completely, but a lot of that, the direct instruction for phonics stopped. And what structured literacy and what we've been trained with letters and what the state is trying to move towards is that structured literacy includes that foundational piece, which is phonics instruction. And, you know, one of the things that I would say, like, from twenty years ago, the phonics instruction that was happening there was instruction on the sounds, the unit awareness. The structured part of it is so systematic of what we are, we are adding in. And that is what U Fly is doing. The, you, Sarah brought up, and we had this conversation before as well. But it is so common as we implement a new curriculum that teachers, kind of, they see it, they get a little bit of training on it, and then so easily can go back to, I'm just gonna teach what I was teaching, right? I was, I know it, right? I'm comfortable with it. I've been doing it for ten years. And so what is that professional development look like? To say, nope, this is what we're doing, right? And that's what U Fly has been this year. And so we have used Wendy as the literacy coordinator, but as a coach in the classroom, going in and showing. So like the football coach who's not just saying, here's what you gotta do and walking away. Here's what you gotta do, let's do it right now, let's practice it, and let's see the next one, right? And so Wendy goes in and she coaches with them. And they go through a lesson or Wendy teaches the lesson and they see that. And then she watches them do the lesson. And so implementing that all year long. Wendy and I were in a conversation, you know, the last couple of weeks, but looking at, where are we at in the implementation? Are we a hundred percent? Are we seventy-five percent? Like, where are we at? And I would tell you that we're about fifty percent. We have the motions, we have the routine, we have the thirty minutes and you're sticking to it and it's at this time. We are to the point where, okay, we have data coming every day, how do we use that? To change our instruction or to improve it, we're not there yet. And so looking at that curricular side of, how do we implement? And this is our, our big concern and our big question about the comprehension side of it. How do we purchase the curriculum? And then how do we stick to it? How do we say, this is the curriculum we're using and let me show you how it's supposed to be. And we're gonna come back and I'm gonna show you again until we are implementing it with the help.
So yes, when you think of, like, we implemented U Fly K four this year, which is really a K two curriculum, but we did that because we wanted to make sure that the foundational skills were in place for people. In third and fourth grade, they ability by group, they ability their group by skill. So we do have three sections currently that are done with the U Fly School Conceivance. But in, in, in that, if we take me and I model and then I also provide coaching, that's four days per teacher right there. So it was January before I got some of the, to some of the teachers and they're like, oh, she would be here this fall. So we've had a lot of conversation around, and that's the like same procedures.
Doing the same thing.
Thing. So when you get to a more comprehensive curriculum, how will we support teachers with that change? And so the first round of coaching really was around the implementation of procedures, like what does a U Fly lesson look like? Last month, we really started to delve into their P L Cs, looking at the data. They collect data every week with their progress monitoring assessment. We might think of it as the old like spelling assessment, it's not a spelling test. It's, it's to see what do the students know of the skills that they've learned. And we've looked at how do you score that? And then how do you really truly analyze that and organize it in a way that you can drive instruction? So as I'm going through the second round of coaching, these teachers still have an option on what they want to be coached on. But we are also including that, how do we use the data that your students are showing you each week to drive your instruction? So that's been, that's been a great, like, that's our next shift. And just seeing how, how much change has happened within the classrooms, we then also realized, like, our parents, how are we supporting our parents? So last fall, we sent home what U Fly recommends, we sent this home on Dojo. I happen to have a sister-in-law who lives in southwest Minnesota and she was asking lots of questions. And it really just got me prompted to be like, you know what, we aren't doing enough for our parents. So I have put together, this is a five-part video series. This is with a kindergarten student. I've had some parents give feedback, I've had some teachers give feedback. And then I also had some literacy leads over at Sourceball give some feedback. So I now have all of the videos except for one, under five minutes. This will show you just one part of the home practice. So there's some explanation as well as one section. And so we'll quickly watch this, just so you can see what it is. Our goal is, next fall, we will have, we'll send these videos out on Dojo. We have also talked about our kindergarten students this year have like a U Fly binder that has materials that they would need. And then their homework comes home in this, so just to kind of emphasize like the importance of this work. These will be sent home. And then we're also going to create a parent resource page on our website. So that there's one place where they can go to in addition to things being sent home on Dojo. So I'll just show you, this video is just under five minutes, but it'll give you the intro to the first part of the home practice. This is video one in a five-part series of how to support beginning learners with the U Fly Home Practice Sheets. First, you will see an overview with some language that was used to teach the new concept. And then you will see a kindergarten student completing the new concept and sample word section of the home practice sheet. This specific example is from lesson twenty-three, where the child is learning about the letter H. It is important to know that all lessons have the same procedure for the new concept and sample word section. Your child will learn and grow as a reader and writer, so the support you give will change based on their development. Please know that there is another series with an older and more advanced learner to view. This is to show you a progression of support that may be implemented while doing the same activity. If at any time you are unsure of how to support your learner, please reach out to your teacher and he or she will answer any questions you may have. Here is some of what your child was taught in U Fly Foundations Lesson Twenty-three. They learned that the graphium H spells the sound "h." They also learned three new irregular words, he, thee, and me. Here is how your child was introduced to the new concept. This is the letter H. H is a consonant. H spells "h," like in the beginning of the word hat. The letter H can come at the beginning of a word such as the word had and has. To make the "h" sound, make a puff of air at the back of your mouth like this. Be sure your voice is off. You can pretend to pant like a dog to make this sound, but keep your tongue in your mouth. Let's start with the new concept and sample words where you're learning about the letter H. Will you read these, which are these?
It's his. Hot, hot. It's hip. Um, hungry. Um, hot. And ham.
The first word I'm gonna have you write is we're kids.
It's.
Nice job. Second word, hot.
Um.
And let's start with. Nice job. When you make your paint page.
I'll start it.
Yeah, let's make sure that the hump stays on, just touches the dotted line and it doesn't come up above.
Oopsie.
Nice job pulling it on. Okay, next word is hip. Remember when we start our letters, we start from the top and pull down. So let's erase that. And then let's do it starting from the top. Let's start at the top and pull down. Nice job.
Oopsie's too big.
Thank you for noticing.
I have to say first and then some.
Great strategy. You wrote the word hip. Nice job. In this video, you saw how an adult might support a child as she practiced reading and writing words with the concept she had just learned in class. Because the new concept for lesson twenty-three was the letter H, the words gave the learner an opportunity to practice reading and writing words containing an H. This is the first of five videos in the U Fly Home Practice Support Series for beginning learners. In video two, you will see how to support your child as he or she practices reading and writing irregular words that have been recently introduced. So the goal was to demonstrate and then also show some examples of how they might support their childhood. And so there's one part, or one video for each of the home practices.
Wendy, a quick question for you. How does that look with a teacher with a class of twenty kids?
So.
How would you, how do you go in and model, are they all doing it at the same time?
So there, it is a little bit different than Ryan and I talked about, how do we show you a lesson?
Without showing you thirty minutes of the lesson?
Yeah, thirty minutes. So in reality, there are eight parts. Five of them are done on day one. And then there's a quick review of part five and then five through eight are done on day two. So it is blending and segmenting sounds. They are practicing reading words, blending words, then they introduce the new concept. And then they practice reading and spelling words. They practice irregular words. And then they also read and write sentences before they read a decoda passage. So maybe next year we'll have little snippets because we're already starting to record. Because Ryan and I have talked about, like, how do we support, how do we support our staff next fall? Like, we've had lots of training and now we're getting comprehension. Like, we can't forget about everything we've done this year with U Fly. Every time that I coach, the staff gives feedback. And so one of the questions, the second round, is what kind of support are you feeling like you want next year? So we have some ideas and we'll potentially be creating some videos with some footage of staff members teaching this year.
So to your point, the lesson is whole group.
It is.
And also the, they're, all of the students, and they might be on the, at the carpet, they might be at tables, but it's whole group. And the bulk of them are using whiteboards and driveway markers. And so when, when they're spelling and they're doing that, all of the kids are doing that and they're showing.
And the teacher is there to provide corrective feedback in the moment, when there are mistakes. And so even the, the authors of U Fly will often tend to say, that is not, there is not, it's not intended to be independent.
to label it. But that, and that practice is in a more standard location.
One more question. Because I know you're, you've been a big instrument in our school, being catalysts trained, our teachers. I see now as a concept of being a former elementary teacher and now what I've seen, catalysts working in the classroom, teachers using catalyst skills of management. Now you have 20 kids in a classroom doing that. How has catalyst helped with UFL? Have you seen that kind of, you know, when a teacher's trained is with management skills, where you don't have organized chaos, I guess you could say, as a former elementary teacher? I know what that's like. I've done it. Do you see it? Do you see where those skills really help our elementary teachers when they do UFL?
Hundred percent. So even we, we have, one of our highest implementers has implemented slides right into the UFL slides to show the students like what they're supposed to look like. Because her feeling was, I feel like I'm transitioning, because there are a lot of transitions, and I want to do that without wasting my words, right? And so it is all about management and not using your words so that you can save your words for relationships and for curriculum. It's one of the reasons why I will also model and do a lot of pointing, like when the front, when the kids are looking at me, I don't need to say anything. I can point, and they look, and they're like, oh, yep, I need to make that change. It just makes for a much calmer and more productive, safe classroom, really. So hundred percent.
It has been really amazing to see this get implemented full. You see, you saw the H up there, and you know, even, I was a math teacher. And they are going through each sound, and they're going through each case, and I'm like, oh, my gosh, where did you learn this? Like, how do you know all of these pieces? And so that, you know, in terms of the pressure, as you're going through UFL and those pieces, it is amazingly laid out. But all of those things to think about, like, the way my mouth is when I say those words, when I say that sound, that the "h" sound is coming from the back of my mouth, it is closed voice, it is my mouth open, all of those things, which has opened the door to us as we are looking at, ah, this kid is really struggling with. And how often it is language, it's just oral language and saying, oh, do you hear that? They're not saying the "mm" in the in the word. They're saying a different sound. That's why they're spelling it wrong.
I have learned so much. I've learned so much myself about the English language, like when you use G for "j" and when you use the J for "j," when you use the C for "k" versus the K for "k." And so I was actually just talking with the mentors. As an adult, you're sitting there like.
Yeah.
I don't know. Like, she'll have it. I don't know why.
She's so is, it's like, how do you? Which is where the videos come in.
Yeah. Well, I will say, anytime you have questions, like, reach out to teachers, because we are learning too. It is incredible how much I didn't know about the English language until we started teaching this. It's really fun for me to coach a lesson that that I haven't taught yet. I'm like, oh, that makes total sense! And then, and then we talk about it, like, oh, yeah! So that has been just incredible. It also, when you know that, then when you look at the data, it gives you specific ways to give feedback to the children. For example, today, one of my mentors was talking about how her buddy spelt desk, D-E-S-C-K, because she learned that after a short vowel, the "k" is spelled with a CK. It is when there's not that consonant there. So now we have to go back and clarify, oh, you're, you're using that rule, but you're confusing it. So things like that, it's pretty incredible.
Wait, shall we come back and talk about morphology?
Yeah. Side the heads of the ruler?
Right, let's say it this way.
Yes.
Thanks, Wendy.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions for Wendy?
No.
Thank you.
Well done.
All right. I'm sorry?
Glad that we have all of that.
Yes. Moving on to policy.
We did not meet, but we will start up meeting tonight.
Okay. Budget?
We did not meet. But, Missy Mary, we might have something to report. I have some things to report. Just a little portion. Okay, 2026 official budget. Most of you already know, we discussed this last meeting. We go, or the budget is underway, still in the fine tuning stages. And with that said, I'm gonna skip to the bottom one. So state legislature, many of those obviously have been brought forward to the legislature. So some of those could affect education. They are set to adjourn on May 11th, so hopefully we'll have a better idea of that. Come towards the end of May. Special ed fiscal monitoring, that's still hanging out there. We haven't heard back. So we're just waiting to hear back if that's been processed and done. But our ESTR fiscal monitoring, we have heard back this last week, and we received a letter stating that we passed, and we are in compliance. There were no findings on our ESTR.
Good shout out.
Current budget, we're in month 10 of the 12, and we have spent 66% of our budget to date. So that is where we are at. That's what I got.
Any questions for Missy?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That's all from budgets. We're going to move on to the 2026, 2027 school calendar, which is closed in the package.
They, you have your calendar that we need to approve tonight, the teacher recommendation. One of the three choices was the one to get out the earliest, which it has always kind of been that way with our staff. So you have the calendar in front of you, which kind of highlights the first day of school, September 8th, which is kind of a late date. So it does eliminate some of the vacation days throughout the year if they want to get out before Memorial Day, which is on May 28th.
Yeah, it's gonna be a long April thing.
And is this, this is 26, 27?
Two years old.
Two years old.
Which is based off of our contract.
Yes.
We need to have the calendar approved two years in advance. But we already have next year's.
And we have 25, 26.
We already have that one though.
Not every school puts them out two years ahead, but according to our contract, we have to. I found that out this week. Because I was like.
Why is it two years at the same time? I would have thought they just want to do one, and then we do the next one? But 25, 26, we already had done. Why would we do both at the same time?
Well, you don't want to do too far in advance, because things may change.
Wasn't that just a couple months ago?
Yeah.
I feel like we did that earlier this year.
Well, this one, it's nice, because that's the year.
Because we updated.
Possibly, they're going to start the road construction there, too.
We may not. We updated the 25, 26, because we changed some conference dates. It was actually passed last year. We just updated it because we had a change on it. Yeah. So my recommendation would be to approve the calendar.
Mine, yeah. That's for that.
All right.
Now, any other questions, comments, or concerns that I screwed that up on, that I started talking about?
Yeah, they don't have a lot of. It's okay, we're good. A lot of print.
I will not have any trouble. Close. What?
It's also, I'm gonna have to say, well, but then I went, no, cut.
All right, any other? Then all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or passes? Make a plan for the missed snow days on, snow day on April 2nd, on revised calendar.
You have a revised calendar there since we missed April 2nd. What I would propose to you is to Friday, May 30th, was supposed to be an early release, which they get out at 1:00, and then we use the last two hours to kind of check staff out and stuff. We now can can do that since we have to bring staff back on the 2nd. I would recommend that we make May 30th a full day, which most parents probably like anyway, which would be normal release. And then we would bring staff back on Monday, the 2nd. So we gain a couple hours back for student time, not the full day, but we're still fine there. And then we would bring the staff back on the 2nd for staff development.
And was staff coming back on the 2nd before, or that was added now?
That's an added day for the April 2nd day where they did not work.
Would somebody like to make a motion on it?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
One second.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Do we have to make it up? What if you didn't make the teachers come back June 2nd?
That we pay the teachers Saturday, we're very nice.
We pay the teachers to be here. It's a contracted day.
And how many contracted days are we?
184. Which would amount to roughly, if the teacher was making, say, $400 a day, times 100 teachers, $40,000. So not to have that made up.
Right.
How do you explain that to taxpayers? You know? And we have things we can do. We always have things to do.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or passes? Superintendent's report?
I have a couple things. Just elementary spring concerts are coming up on Tuesday, April 22nd, for kindergarten and first grade. And second grade is on Thursday, April 24th. They have afternoon and evening shows for those. We also have a spring visual art show, which will be in the CTC Center. They are having an open house on Tuesday, April 29th in the evening, but the show runs from Tuesday, the 29th, and May 2nd. So people who've come and checked out all of our art show, Art Kids, things that they've done throughout the year will be on display.
Okay, so it's not like a video type back, as I was like.
No, it's actually.
So it's their actual projects.
Yeah, projects are up and hung and showing.
All right, I got you.
Arbor Day plant sale, that's coming up, April 25th. The community sale is from 11 to 1:30, so they have different types of plants, like they always have tomatoes and hanging baskets and from other types of plants. So that is coming up.
Requiem flyer there, getting up.
Bus Driver National Appreciation Day is on April 22nd, so we'll make sure we do something for that. Paul Bunyan Music Festival with CLC Band is on Friday, April 25th. That is a free show. So that's with some other area schools along with Art Kids, so they will perform with the CLC's band. Educators of Excellence banquet is coming up on Wednesday, May 7th, and that's put on by Source Wall. And that is for teachers and parents. And for this year, we have the high school. Ben Horn is a teacher being recognized. Suzie Bettis is the EA. For the middle school is Andrea Langhoff and Rebecca Dobson for the EA. And the elementary, it's Caitlin Ivors, and the EA is Dan Kruger. So congratulations to those people. And the last thing I have, I've given you some handouts, put together some information. Some of you have reached out to me regarding some questions regarding new students possibly enrolling, with, talk about Randall. So I've given you policy 630 for you to have, which is our class size recommendation. And I've also given you the open enrollment policy that you can kind of review. Then I combined everything for you in one easy sheet, which will all update every month.
I like the open closing.
The open thing, you can have this. So you can see, this is our enrollment moving up to next year. So our kindergarten class right now, we have 79 enrolled. That is down 14 from where we are currently. Well, it's early, so but keep that in mind. We currently have five sections. That class average would be around 15. Our policy says 17 to 22. So let's say we don't gain any more kids. Let's say we had 79. I would maybe come to you this summer and say, let's take one of those sections away. Maybe we would move that somewhere, depending on where that would be. First grade, we're at 93. We've gained one. We're currently staffed for four sections next year. That would put you at 23. Policy recommendations, 19 to 24. That's open, and it's capped at 105. So you can see the sheets that I put across there. Second grade, we're gaining five. You can, you can read this online, going through every one, but then you can see where we're closed. And I've done it all the way through, all the way through 12th grade. You look at the bottom, moving those numbers up, 2024 current for total high school is 358. Moving those numbers up, we'd be at 374. So we're gaining 16 kids in the high school. The elementary, I'm sorry, the middle school, we were at 428. Moving those numbers up, we'd actually be at 425, so we're down three. Elementary, you're moving, we were at 495, and this, next year, we would be at 492. I must have did that wrong. I got those, I got those flopped. I must have the 495 and 492 flopped around, or it's, I'll double check that. So we're either plus three or minus three. I think we're minus three. It's supposed to be minus three, if I remember right. But keep that in mind then, so when we start updating those numbers, you can see which grades are closed. Right now, we're closed in second, third, fourth, sixth, and eighth. So those are the closed grades for open enrollment. Keeping in mind then, what happens as we maybe gain kids or lose kids? You can also see where we are at with different sections and classes. Keep in mind, part of the cuts were that section of first grade and second grade. Do you bring one of those back or not? You may look at the overall number of saying, well, if you're actually down three kids, do you want to bring a teacher back at $70,000 if we're down three kids? I get the second grade one is, but overall, or do you move it, or move a teacher, for example? But I'll update this sheet kind of every month, or at least the summer. I may not do it in May, because it may not change a lot, but I'll do it throughout the summer for you.
I like that.
So with that Randall possibly closing, how many of those students are A's there? How many students do they usually have? And B are in our district?
I don't know that. They have about 100 kids. I don't know how many are in our district.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So in theory, even with the closed classrooms, if they are coming in a second, third that are closed, and they're in our district.
We're taking them in.
We would have to take them in.
They don't. So we have to be.
Yeah, I would, I would count, I would, I would know. I would think many of them are in our district. My, that's my guess. I would think most of them are already here if they're in our district. But we have gained a few kids that have already signed up from down there. That's where you see the plus five, plus two. I don't see, I don't see you gaining a whole bunch, because the problem with it is if you're a parent down there, and you have a first grader and a third grader, well, we'll take your first grader, but we're not taking your third grader. Would they come with just a first grader?
Some will.
Some will, but you know.
But they're in district, you can take both.
So.
And that's the question, is how many of those students down there are in district?
Yeah.
And what do you think, like, last year, how many of our sections were closed?
Uh, we were closed in two grades last year. We closed in, um.
Well, they had like.
In the elementary, I think we only had three grades closed. Well, most of them were middle school, I think. I think we had three grades closed. I know we were closed in, uh.
Crazy, huh?
Sixth grade. Last year, we were closed in fifth grade, and seventh grade for sure, and I think fourth grade.
That I was looking at the, man, we're not growing much per section, but when we have that many closed, you can't grow that good.
because it may not change all a lot, but I'll do it throughout the summer for you.
I like that.
So with that Randall possibly closing, how many of those students are A there? How many students they usually have in B are in our district?
Uh, I don't know that, they have about 100 kids. I don't know how many are in our district. Yeah, so.
So in theory, even with the closed classrooms, if they are coming in a second, third that are closed, and they're in our district, we have to be.
We would have to take them in.
So we have to be.
Yeah, I would, I would count, I would, I would know, I would think many of them are in our district. Mike, that's my guess, I would think most of them are already here if they're in our district. But we have gained a few kids that have already signed up from down there. That's where you see the plus five, plus two. I don't see, I don't see you gaining a whole bunch, because the problem with it is if you're a parent down there, and you have a first grader and a third grader, well, we'll take your first grader, but we're not taking your third grader. Would they come with just a first grader?
Some will.
Some will, but, you know.
If they're in district, you'll take both.
Yeah, so.
And that's the question, is how many of those students down there are in district?
Yeah.
And what do you think, like, last year, how many of our sections were closed?
Uh, we were closed in two grades last year, we were closed in, um...
Well, they had like three.
In the elementary, I think, we only had three grades closed. Well, most of them were middle school, I think. I think we had three grades closed. I know we were closed in, uh...
Crazy enough.
Sixth grade, last year we were closed in fifth grade, and seventh grade for sure, and I think fourth grade.
That I was looking at the, man, we're not growing much perspective, but when we have that many closed, you can't grow that good.
You know what I mean?
In the past, we've always, oh, we're growing so much, so much.
That was part of my budget, right?
Yeah.
That was part of my budget consideration, so you guys remember, as expenses go up, you're not going to grow much anymore.
And now, this, this was good for that, thank you.
Yeah, because like, you know, that's why I say, we've been living on growth.
I haven't changed my opinion on class sizes, but.
And then that growth is going to stop. You may grow in high school, as those kids move through a little bit, but the elementary is really going to be, but like you said, you have room to grow in kindergarten, and you have room to grow in first grade. And those might mop up between the next three or four months, depending what happens. But I would anticipate we'll be at least at 80, you know, probably around that 88 number in first, in kindergarten. I think there's seven or eight that we anticipate that haven't gotten their paperwork yet. But it's kind of gone down, as you can see, it's a little lower than it has been right now.
Have we heard anything yet about our voluntary pre-K?
We have not heard.
Application?
No.
All right.
That's all I got.
Any other questions for Neil Millard? All right, then I would entertain a motion for adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
So, we have to be careful about little halls closing in the school too.
No. Well, they're closing maybe part of their building. They have open, they have lots of space in the buildings, so they're closing some buildings.
So it sounds like they want to possibly close middle school buildings.
Don't put your pen away, girl. Me? Not me.
End stream. Bye, everyone.